Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is a Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's Monday, November 2nd. Time is 9:02 a.m. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the free, public, and just states. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the Approval of Minutes, October 19th, 2020 meeting.
So move.
Second.
A motion to approve the minutes and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna skip presentations for now. We're having some technical issues. IT's on the way up to help out, so we're gonna skip the presentation for the moment. Let's go to contracts or agreements for approval. We'll go to the Emergency Declaration 2020-18. John?
Yes, based upon the information from the EMA's website and talking with the Health Department and talking with the Commissioners, you asked me to draft a new emergency declaration since our last one expired on Sunday. This is an emergency declaration that shall be in place until the end of business, November 16th. It is a reiteration of emergency declaration from before, except it reduces social gatherings to 250 people or 25% of the occupancy level of a venue which ever is greater. It also has the enforcement by the Health Department where those businesses that have a permit, the Health Department, if they find a violation, can affect their permit to enforce the mask requirement for going in and out of the county building as well as other venues. The Governor, on Friday late, enacted his emergency declaration, continuing the health emergency until December 1st, 2020, in Executive Order 20-47. I anticipate, and from what I understand, the Governor may, in fact, enact other emergency or executive orders which may revert the state back to Stage IV or 4.5, given the numbers that are existing. So this emergency declaration is for the county continues the mask requirement for being in the county building and employees and people in the county building, and also masks at retail businesses, and reduces the number of occupants at a particular social venue to, from 500, which is what Stage 5 was, to 250, which is what Stage 4 was.
Okay, then I want to add, any gathering more than 250 people or greater, 25% occupancy level venue must get approval through Delaware County Health Department at least 14 days in advance of the gathering. That was, this is also part of the order, so I will make that clear. We're dropping the gatherings to 250 people, but you can still get approval from the Health Department, but you need to do that with at least 14 days in advance of the gathering.
I'll make a motion when we approve.
Second.
A motion to approve the declaration and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thanks for working on that, John. Appreciate it. And now it looks like the presentation has cleared itself up, so we'll go ahead and go to the Future of Work Muncie.
Thank you. I was invited here just to share a quick update on what we're doing with the Future of Work Initiative. This is part of Sustainable Muncie. And what we've seen happen over the last couple of years is a shift to a real focus on a person-centered workforce development. And how can we work together to co-create solutions to the 21st century workforce needs that we have? We have a lot of great efforts that support businesses and bringing in new businesses, but really looking at what citizens can do to engage, to really increase this workforce. And as we've moved forward, we've identified a few different project areas. And the first one is what we call our Muncie Technology and Engineering Network. And this is a partnership with Purdue Polytechnic and Anderson, who has come to set up in Delaware County. They do have a classroom and a laboratory on the second floor of the Mad Jacks Building to do workforce training certifications. There will be new online certifications being available in 2021, as well as a new faculty position at Muncie Central High School. Purdue Polytechnic was able to partner with Ivy Tech in a first-of-its-kind, unique partnership to have a Purdue faculty member that is credentialed to teach both Purdue classes and Ivy Tech classes at Muncie Central High School. And Jim Williams, the school board president, when we first announced this, he's like, "I looked this up, and I can't find anywhere in the country that this kind of partnership is happening." And so that's really what the Future of Work is about, is about how we collaborate and form these partnerships that can start to look at what opportunities exist, to link existing assets, and then to find these new solutions. And so in preparing for that Purdue programming, we've been able to connect students on field trips into advanced manufacturing facilities, giving them hands-on application of robotics and engineering technology. One of the things that we started last year was a robotics league. And so we've supported schools in Madison and Delaware Counties to start VEX robotics teams. One of the things we saw was that there were a lot of great STEM education programs for elementary school students, and then some really high-end programs like the fixed gears, but really nothing in between to help students get that introductory level at middle school and high school. And so looking at where the needs are and beginning to work together, we've been able to offer many grants to 12 schools in Madison and Delaware Counties.
Can we dim the lights, please? Thank you. All of them. Thank you.
And pre-COVID, we were able to offer a Build Your Own 3D Printer Camp. We've partnered with Ivy Tech on their summer STEM programs and continue to provide customized workforce trainings, as well as the new certifications. So this focus for the Muncie Technology and Engineering Network is really about promoting STEM education. And the social media pages tend to promote everything that's going on in the county and in the region as well. So looking at places where students can connect. One of the things that came out of our advisory team meetings was this campaign called "I Am the Future of Work." And this really came about from an administrator at Muncie Schools who said, "You know, kids get a lot of lists. We hand them a lot of information, but they don't understand what these careers really are, what careers in technology do." And so we were able to do some interviews with employees from Magna and Marsix. We went into the facilities and saw them in action. And so the videos that we have highlight individuals. They highlight the jobs that they're doing, and it helps provide a connection for students to say, "Oh, I could do that." You know, when you're making a piece for a seatbelt or for a car seat, that matters, right? You're making something. And so it's getting students interested early on in what is actually happening in local businesses and giving them opportunities then to explore those STEM programming. One of the other important pieces that we see with this person-centered workforce development is the Web of Support Initiative. And this is a partnership with the Muncie Action Plan that focuses on mentoring. And so we've heard for a lot of years, and we've seen this come about through all the planning that MAP has done, that there's a need for students to be supported going throughout high school. We've been able to partner with the Institute for Community and Adolescent Resiliency, and Derek Peterson has spent decades researching and implementing programs in schools. Muncie is the first community in the nation to say, "How do we make this not a school-based program, but a community-based program?" And we're really excited to be able to offer this. We were written in as part of the Muncie Schools Innovation Plan as a way to support having the community support students and looking at not just pairing a student with, you know, an adult in the community. Those are great opportunities to provide new information for them, but really to start equipping students to look around and say, "Who's in my life already? How can we make self-sustaining mentoring programs where we shift the community culture to, 'I recognize the value in you, and I want to support you.'" So the Web of Support offers, right now, trainings and some presentations, support for organizations like after-school programs and nonprofits, and then also opportunities for networking events. And so through, obviously, we had a huge shift in the gathering and the mentoring opportunities, but the need for that resiliency is stronger than ever. And that's one of the important things that we see is that throughout the pandemic and throughout all the changes, we've had to be resilient. We've had to adapt. And a lot of people have found themselves really struggling because they feel isolated and they feel disconnected. And so the need for this kind of awareness and these kinds of opportunities, I think, is greater than ever. So we're excited to partner with the Institute for Community and Adolescent Resiliency to look at not only how do we strengthen students, because we see that correlation between the number of adults in a student's life, trusted, caring, involved adults, and their success in school. We see that being a greater predictor of success than any of the traditional at-risk factors, including gender, race, socioeconomic status, or single-parent households. And so as we work with the Muncie Action Plan to continue to roll this initiative out, there will be more opportunities, both virtually and face-to-face, for students to connect with caring adults and for adults to find places where they can be supported and connect as well. And then our third piece is really this focus on person-centered workforce development. And we have adapted a strategy called Strategic Doing, which is an agile leadership function that was type of business management that was developed out of Purdue University and is currently run out of the University of North Alabama. We currently have 20 people going through certification in Delaware County right now in a partnership with IU Ball Memorial to take these individuals and be able to equip them with strategies to say, "How do we get more citizens involved in the issues that matter? How do we mobilize action?" It's great that we have all these plans, but if we're not taking the action to accomplish the plans, we're missing that link. And so that's really where we start to step in and say, just like with the VEX Robotics League, what assets already exist? Where are our strengths? And then what can we do to link new, you know, link existing assets, make new opportunities that help meet the needs that aren't being met? So I would encourage you to get involved. On the back of our handout are some links. And the top one is our Future of Work Action Survey. And as we move into creating the action teams and applying the Strategic Doing process that we're in training to do right now, this will help give feedback on what the needs are, on getting the citizen input, as well as the input of the advisory team that's already been put together. And then you're invited to connect with us through email. We have monthly newsletters for both the Web of Support and the Future of Work. Questions?
Let's speak about the retirees. There's a few retirees, future retirees in here. You want to tell us about the club?
Yeah, this one, we're actually just getting launched. And so this is kind of unique. When we look at person-centered workforce development, it's taking that cradle-to-career approach, but then also looking at what happens post-career. And so for a lot of people making that transition into retirement, there's this, "Where's my purpose now?" And so a lot of that purpose and function shifts in that time of life. And so we're taking this approach to say, "What can we do to provide opportunities for people to transition slowly and still see that their skills and their expertise are valued in the way that we create intergenerational programming or create new opportunities where maybe you're launching businesses in your 60s and 70s that weren't being done before?" And so looking at utilizing spaces such as the maker spaces at Mad Jacks to say, "What kind of skills do you want to pass on? What kind of skills do you want to use to do something new?"
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And it's always nice to know what's moving around the community. We have any questions, John, on your email?
Nope.
Kara, thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, could you hit those lights for me, please? Okay, Continuity of Operations Plan, Emily Anderson?
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. The state has required all the courts in Indiana to submit a continuity operations plan. Part of our plan is finding alternative facility operations if we have some kind of disaster or another pandemic where it makes our facility unavailable. So the only place that we could come up with is the Commissioners' courtroom. I know that I had asked you previously if we were doing anything with 40 Court, and Sherry had said that she'd already promised that space. So part of the plan is saying, I gave you a copy of this. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, so that we would give, this is our alternative space, but that we would need to arrange some kind of memorandum of understanding so that if there's ever a time that we need this and we have to put that into action, we'd have to, for emergency hearings, it'd have to come here. So I just need to get approval so I can move forward with this plan.
What's the pleasure of it, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve the request and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Brooke, I'll get with you to get on the memorandum. Okay.
I will.
Thank you.
We'll keep the rent pretty high for you guys, okay?
Okay. Extension Contractual Services Agreement for Purdue University.
Good morning, Commissioners. Molly Hunt, County Extension Director. In front of you, you have our annual contractual services agreement that outlines all the services that we're able to provide in the agreement of the delineation of responsibilities between the county and the university. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
John, have you looked through it?
I have had a chance to review it, and it is a standard agreement, so I didn't see anything wrong with it.
I'll make a motion when we approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agreement with Purdue University and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just need a signed copy from you, Commissioner.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the EMS vehicles to sell at auction. Mike Ashley?
Mike Ashley, Delaware County EMS. Just wanted to get your approval to, we've got four vehicles we wanted to send to auction. There are three older ambulances and a 2000 Navistar International Box Truck that we just don't have a use for anymore. However, two of the ambulances, a 2012 Braun Liberty and a 2009 Braun Raider, the salesman from Braun contacted me and said he might be interested in buying us back for the boxes because normally those are trucks we'd had rechassé, but we're just downsizing the fleet. The 2007 Chevy truck, that's a Lifestar. That box is about 22 years old, so it's at the end of its life. So just seeking to go ahead and get these off the books and see what we can get out of them.
Were you just going to use that GOV?
Yeah, I think so. Unless the Braun guy comes through, he's on vacation, but he's supposed to get with me. I just found out about that by the time I was writing this stuff up, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the sale of these items?
Second.
And a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next we have the Muncie Housing Authority, Joseph Anderson.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Anderson. I am the CEO for the City of Muncie Housing Authority. We come before you this morning to talk about securing or securing the titles for some property. We, back on September 18th, submitted a tax credit application for a project that will be done in Hecken Park. It actually involves the old Garfield Building. We will be demolishing that and looking to build 45 new housing units. 30 of those would be two bedrooms. The other 15 will be 15 bedrooms. We have secured, through the Parks Department, four acres of the park to build out towards the tennis court. What we're asking for also, there is some property that is adjacent north or south of the building that we are trying to secure, and so we come here this morning to see about that. And I have with me this morning also our attorney, Steve Murphy, from DeFerviran, who may be able to answer any questions. We did meet with the Treasurer last week, I believe, to talk about this project.
John, we have to hold a public hearing and all that also?
No, not for this one, you don't. It's 1501 South Monroe and 1521 South Monroe. What you would do is, we have a resolution, which is Resolution 20-041, which would assign the tax sale certificates, because they're a governmental entity, to them. If they were just a straight down-for-profit, you'd have to have the public hearing and whatnot, but since they're a governmental entity, you can assign the tax sale certificates directly to them.
I just wanted that explanation. That way, we don't have to worry about anybody saying anything about it.
No, you have Resolution 20-20-42, which is for a not-for-profit entity on the agenda as well, but...
41 is the...
41 is the resolution dealing with the Muncie Housing Authority assigning those two tax sale certificates. And they'll have to do the same notice and do all that to get the tax sale deed.
And the properties, they're not the ones that we had problems with last year?
No, these are on the tax, these were on the tax sale, and they went through the tax sale, did not sell, so the tax sale certificates came back to the Commissioners to be doled out as you determine.
And these lots are just north of this?
Yes, ma'am.
On the corner?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you been mowing them? Somebody's been mowing them.
Not a somebody has been mowing them. We do own property in that location that we have been taking care of. We own the lots that used to belong to Buddy Carroll, where he had his gas station. So that's our property up to the Marshall's Car Lot.
This plan went through the Planning Commission. It seemed like a pretty decent plan.
Yeah, I'll second.
You're making a motion to approve Resolution 2020-41, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that resolution. It's a resolution of Delaware County, Indiana Board of Commissioners, assigning tax sale certificates to the City of Muncie for the use and benefit of the Muncie Housing Authority. And we have a second on that. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we'll go down to revised COVID-19 protocol for reported positive tests of employees or potential exposure. John?
Yes, at your request, the, I drafted with the Health Department's significant input, a revised protocol for employees if they test positive in the county. The CDC has made some definitional changes to the process and changed the definition of close contact, so it was important to revise and update that protocol. I've sent it out. The Health Department gave me some good information and advice on how to revise it. So I've made those revisions, and I submit it for the Commissioners' approval.
Is there any question on the new protocol? Some minor changes?
If they have any questions, see Pam. Call Pam.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thanks for working on that, John.
Pam, we'll get that out to all Department and elected officials later today.
Excellent. Okay, we'll go to ordinances for introduction, ordinance number 2020-020. An ordinance of Delaware County, Indiana, creating a fund for deposit of funds received by the Delaware County EMA from the Ball Brothers Foundation to provide funding for the purchase of equipment. Director Cuttino?
Morning, Commissioners. John Cuttino, Director of Emergency Management. This is the grant that I spoke to you guys about at the last Commissioner meeting from Ball Brothers. Corey Kissick, my deputy director, applied for this grant to purchase a drone, not only to assist the Sheriff's Department with a crash team reconstruction, but also maybe eventually move forward to search and rescue and whatnot through our department. So we were awarded the money, so now we just need to create the ordinance to put the money in to start purchasing our equipment. I'd ask that we could suspend the rules to move forward with this.
I'll make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 2020-020.
Second.
A motion to introduce the ordinance and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
I'll make a motion we suspend the rules on ordinance number 2020-020.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2020-020.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, resolutions for approval. Resolution number 2020-040, Resolution Delaware County, Indiana, the Board of Commissioners amending, restating Resolution 2020-037, approving joint undertaking agreement pledging increment to the Daleville Redevelopment Commission and authorizing execution of documents. Mr. Bookout.
Mr. Henry, that's a mouthful.
It is.
Thank you. Brad Bookout with Delaware County Economic Affairs. Appreciate you hearing this resolution this morning. Resolution 2020-040 amends the previous resolution for the Daleville Build, Operate, Transfer Pledge. There's no change to the dollar amounts in this resolution. This resolution only clarifies the language to allow the BOP payment to be made over the life of the agreement. The language in the previous resolution only referred to the amount being just available. So this is just subtle wording change in the resolution. Helps satisfy the developers' intention on the project.
Thanks.
Very good. What's the desire of the Commissioners?
I'll make a motion we adopt Resolution 2020-40.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bookout. Okay, we'll go down to Resolution number 2020-042, Resolution Delaware County, Indiana Board of Commissioners identifying tax sale certificate to be assigned to nonprofit entities.
Yes, our office was contacted by ECI, a tax exempt, not-for-profit organization as to certain tax sale certificates that they are requesting. 1701 West 6th, 713 West Adams, 226 South Main or in Albany, and the 400 block of East Oak in Albany, Indiana, for them to get the tax sale certificates, do the notice, so that they can then look on future development for these properties.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number 2020-042.
Second.
We have a motion to approve that resolution and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Regan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
And there will be a public hearing on this, on this request, November 16th, at the start of your meeting.
Very good. Department Heads and elected officials. Mr. Singleton, could you come to the podium, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Singleton, Director of Delaware County 911. We had some, we had some issues at 911 as far as COVID. I just want to say, Paul did an amazing job. This happened late on a Friday evening, and he worked on that all weekend to keep everything going. But Paul, can you give us an update? Well, during that initial outbreak, we ended up having four test positive for COVID. Those four are still off. We're waiting the new procedure and for them to be able to get back to work. The four that I had off with symptoms, they all tested negative, as has everyone else in the center, and they are back to work. My plan is to go through another round of testing this week to ensure that everyone stays negative. stays negative. That's to make sure that we're able to provide services, and then next week, we have training scheduled for our new phone system that's currently being installed, our new 911 system. So that training will be, will take place next week pending that we have no more outbreaks. During this time, we had lots of people step up and offer help. Last week, we turned our City of Muncie administrative calls over to Ball State. They were transferred to Ball State, and that went as seamless as it could. So a big shout out to Ball State's dispatch, Police Department, and I think that was approved all the way up through one of their vice presidents. So just a big shout out to Ball State and their dispatch and their police department for stepping up and helping us. Also heard from the State 911 Board, as well as in digital, who handles some of the phone services and our backup services. They offered whatever help they could give. At this point, I think we're holding our own. So I didn't take them up on any of this. We are working on a, committing a long-term plan to paper. It's what we already do and we have in place, but we're committing that to paper and getting a memorandum of understanding signed between the agencies. So not only people can help us, that we can help other dispatch centers as well. So we have a copy that we'll be working on this and getting the information to Mr. Brooke so he could commit at least our form to writing, and then we can get it out to surrounding My staff's been great. They're the ones that keep that place running. You know, we have had some sickness, and we've had some people off, but they've stepped up and kept that place running. Has it cost us some overtime? Sure, it has. But we're just fortunate that the people wanted to help out and wanted to work that. So going forward, I think we're in very good shape. Once we get our four other people back, we'll be back to 100%. We also took our calls back from Ball State Friday afternoon, so we're back doing all of our own phone work.
Well, again, I appreciate you taking care of that outbreak there. We're also very appreciative to all of your staff. I listened to the radio a lot during that time, and you couldn't tell that there was any kind of, anything going on there. So they were very professional, and on behalf of the Commissioners, we greatly appreciate you and them both, so.
Thank you.
Let them know we said thank you.
And Commissioners were great. Shannon, you were my go-to person, and you were right there whenever I had a question or needed anything. So thank you to all the Commissioners for your support as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thank you. And thanks to Mr. Commissioner Henry because he has that background, and it seems like everything always happens on a Friday or Saturday.
Yep, always, yep. Is there any other department heads, elected officials that would like to speak? Okay, we have the, everyone receive the Waits and Measures Monthly Report. We have the payment of claims, $1,464,195 and 11 cents.
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion to pay the claims in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. John, are there any comments to speak of?
There was a compliment on the presentation for the future work, and then there was a comment about presenting a COVID outbreak at EMS without probably wearing a mask, just a complaint there, so.
Okay. All right, we have no one signed up to speak. I would entertain a motion to recess.
They're moved.
Second.
We have a motion to recess in a second. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. We're recessed.